Good evening, everyone. This is the Elizabeth Township Planning Committee meeting. This is March 20th, 2019. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What call?
President George Tupid, President Scotty Fawcett.
President.
Dave May Cioti.
Here.
Dan Quayre.
Here.
Alternate, Sandy Hurner.
Here.
Robert Maddie.
Present.
Solicitor Rapounis.
Here.
And Veronica Bennett.
Here.
Citizens, anyone want to address?
Cindy Brodean.
Let's see if I have this right. As I've said before, Elizabeth Township is my legacy and my heritage. My family's been here forever. And I've always praised where I lived, even when the McKees brothers called Elizabeth Township "Elizabeth" backwards because of the farmers instead of the, instead of the close neighborhoods. I've come to a time where I can honestly say I'm embarrassed to say that I live here. Everyone envied us with our neighborhood structure. But now we have partnered and lobbied with industry and nobody, that nobody else wanted, and people are glad that they haven't moved here. The yacht got cleaned up and now it's going to get destroyed again. My commissioner begged to slow things down, and it seems since he asked that question, we've speeded up. In other places, it takes one to three years to work these issues out, and we do it, it seems like in 20 minutes. Once again, a conditional application is on the agenda, which means planning, industry, the solicitor are writing the rules instead of going to zone or doing end around before the zone, which I think is unacceptable. Today and the hearing next week seems very, very similar, so my question is, is why are we here at the planning before the zone? Why aren't we going to the zone, having them work out the details, and then come here to put them all together? Some people have questioned as to what happened, and that is my question from December 20th. It was advertised that day as a hearing, but it was conducted as a meeting. I know that the zone next week has their rules, but it seems like we don't have rules as to what is a hearing and what is a meeting. So I am asking moving forward if this presentation goes into a hearing that we know ahead of time as to whether or not it is an official hearing where people can claim standing and ask questions, or if it's just going to be a meeting where we stand up for three minutes and talk. What I love about the Gorse Line regulations that have recently been passed that's related to fracking is that all of you as individuals are liable for anything that would happen because of the decisions that you make. It's no longer just the township. There was a question kind of in there. Well, the question is, is there is a difference between a hearing...
Sure, if you look at the advertisement, it'll tell you when it's a notice meeting.
But that way, hold on, okay.
It'll tell you when there's a notice meeting versus when there's a public hearing. So this is a notice meeting for review of the, you know, the items on the agenda for the project commission.
Right.
For a conditional use, it will eventually go to a public hearing.
Okay.
At that public hearing, there'll be a quick, you'll notice if you go to come to public hearing, it should be like court reporter here. That'll give you a, that'll give you a hint.
Sure.
Like, hey, it's not something that's just a regular meeting.
Correct.
And also, it's advertised as a public hearing, and structurally, it's run different because these normal meetings will be run by either the chairperson, president of the board, whoever's running that, the elected official. For the public hearings generally, I run, the solicitor will run those public hearings.
Okay.
So you'll notice those differences. Starting with the advertisement, so if you read the ad, it should tell you that you're showing up for a public hearing.
And that was my question for the meeting on December...
Yeah, so when you talk about the Invergney hearing on December the 20th, if you'll notice, it was advertised as a public hearing with a special meeting to follow. I didn't run the public hearing, and Chris Evans, or Chris, Chris Evans at the time, yeah, was, was the chairman or the president of the board, he ran the special meeting following that.
Correct.
During the public hearing, there was a court reporter.
Correct.
Questions asked, there were standing, there were questions about whether you wanted to have party status, if you recall. That, all of that stuff happened at the public hearing, and then the special meeting to follow was a voting meeting, so that's the difference.
But none of the attorneys or anybody were allowed to ask any questions?
That's not true. That's not true.
Okay.
Okay.
I got that on record. Thank you.
Russell Verbanek.
Hello, I'm Russell Verbanek, and on the conditional application for the Galene freshwater intake and the Sito freshwater above Brink around the storage tank, just like to say I'm in favor of those. Because Huntley and Huntley, they have, you know, permits to drill five wells up at Apollo and six wells at Plutus, and each well is going to, can take like 5,000 back and forth trips of water for the fracking. And it seems to me that if we can get this freshwater intake from the Yawka Gany River to be pumped to these wells instead of running the trucks, it'll be a great benefit to the township. You'll take all of those truck trips off the road, you'll limit the damages done to the road from that, and then when the impact fees come in, spend it, and they spend all that money on the roads, maybe they can spend it on something else. So I'm in favor of the freshwater intake and, you know, pumping the water to the wells rather than trucking it. The other thing is on the zoning ordinance review, it just seems to me, based on what Invergney has done, there's quite a few sites, I think, in the township where land is zoned for uses residential usually, that it can't be used for because there's stuff underneath the ground or on the ground that won't permit that. So I think our zoning ordinances need to re-review those plots of land identified and something done with the zoning so they can actually be used by people that own the property. Okay, thank you.
You know what, my, I'm sorry, just point of clarification on Cindy. I, I was actually mistaken in what I'd said about the December 20th hearing. Sorry, we were, we were sort of intermixing conditional uses with the legislative action of the zoning amendment. So although there was a public hearing for the zoning amendment, it's actually structured differently for that because it's a legislative action. It's not something where you get party status and there's challenges like there is with the conditional use when you have an impact happening. When you have a legislative action which is strictly just amending the zoning ordinance, it's strictly, it's certainly a legislative issue, so those are handled differently. So that is why we structured the way that it was, without party status and things of that nature. And Dwight Ferguson was there, he represented the landowners, he still does. So, I mean, he, he understood that, he and I discussed that. He actually sent me a letter prior to the meeting about that, so he, he knows that it was legislative and that's, that's how it was structured. So, apologize for the confusion.
Is there, is there a way that that can be done to notify us that it's that difference? Because we all came with questions.
Well, look, it's, so when you, it depends on the action that's being taken. So a conditional use is different than amending an ordinance, right? So amending the ordinance is strictly a legislative action for the board, right? It doesn't involve impacts and applicants and things that, you know, when they're trying to do a use. So, you know, obviously, when there's land development or conditional uses, those will be structured differently, and you'll have the party status and things.
And like I said, I understand the zone.
Sure.
Because they do have people there.
Well, for zoning hearing as well, right?
Right, right.
When you have, when you have variances and things, those are structured more like hearing, like, like court hearings, if you will.
Right, right.
But something like a zoning ordinance amendment is handled differently because it's strictly legislative in nature.
And where is that written at?
In the law. There's cases, there's cases that all, that deal with that, so.
Well, what I mean even here, because the 200 people that were in the room expected to ask questions and weren't, really didn't understand that they could not. So...
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, it's written, it's written in combination between the NPC and case law. I mean, that's how it's structured, so.
Well, in the future, even on the website, could that be stated so that...
You can ask the commissioners, it's all up to them. You can ask the commissioners to put additional information on there if you want, that's up to them.
Okay, so that is something that could be brought up at, at, at another meeting.
You can pop the commissioner, you can bring it up in the meeting, yeah, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Ask them, yeah, it's their decision on that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a, that's a request for my answer. For flood, that's all of that. Yes. Go ahead. Well, so you, you had mentioned, Cindy, the public hearing scheduled for next week.
Yes.
The zoning, that's for the flood plan. That's all handled by the zoning hearing board. Huntley and Huntley is the applicant.
Correct.
But it's not the use, it's because of the location.
Okay.
Okay, it ties into this, but it's completely different.
Okay, that's what I, it, it is worded so similar that I didn't understand.
Yeah, that, everything before the zoning hearing board is a public hearing.
Okay, that I had, because I do understand, I always did understand the zone, but when I read what this was this evening, it just sounded so similar, I didn't know.
Yeah.
That we were having this and then going to the zone so quickly. So, thank you, John.
Thank you.
And Matt, thank you for straightening that up.
All right. We'll have you come up so that it's on the line.
It is confusing because there are various layers of processes that happen, and they're all structured differently, you know? Even for a conditional use, you know, you have this, this meeting where you have it, then you have a conditional use hearing, then you have to have a meeting where it's voted on, so you have, you have layers. And especially in this type of situation, when you have to get zoning hearing board, you have to get a flood point variance or a variance, you add another layer. So everything that has, you know, and it's a different process. So I know it is confusing if you haven't been through it many times, and so, like I said, it's even more confusing because, right, public hearing structured for one thing may not be structured the same as, as a public hearing on another item.
Okay.
So it is, it is sort of confusing. So they're good questions, but, but, you know, like I said, it's, they're good questions and hopefully you can get some clarity on that.
And I know that the first time we had a zone hearing within Invergney, there were a lot of people, they didn't understand it was a court hearing and, you know, all of those kinds of things. They didn't understand it, they thought, they thought it was just going to be like coming to a commissioners meeting, so I will, I will, I'm busy with my book, so the next time I...
You mean with Huntley, you talked about with Huntley?
No, with Invergney, the first time with Invergney.
Oh, you mean back when they went, so they went through a different process at that time? They had applied for a use variance?
Yes.
So they went to zoning, which then, right, and then they went through a totally different process the second time.
Right, but a lot of people in there didn't understand that it was a court hearing and that, you know, the procedures that were there were different than like a normal commissioners meeting. That's not...
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks.
All right, we're going to go to Huntley and Huntley. Instead of going to zoning, or it's going to kind of screw things up a little bit. So first thing we're going to do is the conditional use application for Huntley and Huntley. Then we'll move on to, if you want to zoning next after that, and then forward. So that will be how we will work this, so it'll be conditional use application. Then following that will be zoning ordinance review, and then curb, and last will be the floor. Okay.
Blaine, move to somebody else from Huntley and Huntley, could be back again. Just briefly, Huntley is developing a water distribution facility, the purpose of which is to dramatically reduce the amount of truck traffic, water truck traffic needed to service. It's well past during hydraulic fracturing. The system basically is going to be set up, and this will be explained in more detail in a moment, that the water will be withdrawn from the Yawka Gany River through an intake in the river piped up to a pump house, and then from a pump house, it's pumped through another line to the previously approved Sito pad, which is adjacent to the Plutus well pad. The goal of this, and Kim Price, who most of you know, will explain this in a little more detail, is to take on average between 4,000 and 5,000 truck loads of water off township roads for every well this drill or any pad. We're here for two things tonight. They asked for a recommendation for the conditional use for what's called the Galene Water Withdrawal Facility. That's basically the pump house coming out of the river and the pipes up to Sito, and then a separate conditional use application just for the tanks that will be, the tank that will be placed on the Sito pad. Both of these uses are now conditional uses under the amended zoning ordinance. Here tonight, we have Kim Price, who, again, you all know, she'll give a little bit of an overview of how the system works and why it's going to be so beneficial to everybody. Then Ryan Bailey, who you all know too, will then walk through the site plans for both sites and explain how it's all going to function. We also have here tonight, in case questions come up, Brian Bilmuth is a regulatory advisor for Huntley, Scott Kruger, who is with the Water Group, and Joshua Shimko, who's with a company called McKim and Creed, who designed the pump house building. So in case we're going to get to that level of detail, but they're here to answer those questions. So with that, we could ask Kim to come up and she can again provide somewhat of an overview. I think you've seen some of this before, but I think it's worth reiterating how beneficial this project's going to be, not only for Huntley, but for the residents in the township. Kim?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. We discussed briefly in the fall a slight system overview, but I wanted to revisit that this evening so that you get the full picture and sort of refresh your memory on why this project is going to be so effective for Elizabeth Township. The big takeaways for us are the fact that the addition of this water system, I'll call it, are going to, one, improve efficiency of operations, which would mean that ultimately we're going to be spending the least amount of time on pad during completions operations or fracking as possible, because we'll have access to a higher rate source of water. The second thing is that you'll notice it will drastically decrease traffic in the township, which I think benefits every stakeholder here in, in Elizabeth Township. So in order to start talking through that, I wanted to make sure you are aware of what we currently have available for water at the site without this, without these facilities. Our current source of water is coming from PA American Water. It is a relatively light resource right now. The maximum rate of withdrawal we can have there is about 6, yeah, 600 gallons per minute, which equates to only about 864 gallons per day. I know that sounds like a lot, but I'll, I'll be able to put all of this into perspective for you. Unfortunately, the needed amount of water to, to complete a well sits well in excess to that on average. If we were to only utilize that source for completing these wells, it would take us about a month to complete one well at the location, at each location. In contrast, if we were to adopt the Galene slash Sito water plan that we're proposing tonight, we can complete those wells in as little as seven days. So we estimate seven to 14 days with a little bit of buffer there, drastically decreases the time needed on pad in order to complete those operations, and it keeps truck traffic off the road. So if we were to go ahead and move forward with only the PA American Water source, we would definitely need to supplement with truck traffic on the roads. Typically, truck traffic only for a typical Marcellus well pad, for a typical Marcellus well actually, is about 5,000 truckloads per well. Now, that, that can be varied, and that depends on the length of, length of the lateral, and it depends on the number of stages that are necessary to crack those wells, but that's a pretty industry, a pretty commonly accepted term. I think Blaine used four to 5,000. I'm going to play worst-case scenario and say about 5,000 truckloads per well. The thing that I wanted to call your attention to as well, previously in other meetings, some residents voiced concern about withdrawing a high rate of water from the Yawka Gany River. What we're proposing is actually about 4 million gallons per day from the Yawks, and that number has been approved by several agencies, which I'm sure Ryan will address later on in his presentation. But I know residents have been concerned by that, and that's actually not something that I think the community should, should be concerned by. Historical flow data indicates that the Yawk River flows at an average rate of 1.3 gallons per minute, and as I mentioned, our rate of withdrawal is 2,778 gallons per minute, equating to 4 million a day. That is less than a quarter of a percent of the, of the flow of the Yawka Gany River. So it's very minimal, and I think, as you could imagine, likely why other agencies are okay with us withdrawing at that rate.
And Kim, that's only going to happen when water's being withdrawn.
Yes.
Or the, with the hydraulic fracturing. It's not all the time.
Exactly. It'll only happen whenever we're actively operating our frac, our frac crews for the, for the necessary wells. And now to, to jump back to our actual plans in Elizabeth Township, we have 15 permitted wells in the, in the municipality right now. We are only planning for 2019 to do three at Apollo and three at Plutus. Those, that's our current structure of the plan. So if we wanted to talk back again to that reduction in total operations time on, on pad for completions operations, that would have played to probably over six months if we were only to use the PAWC water source. If we're able to utilize this facility in the way that we had it planned, it would probably be a little under two months for total completions operations between the two pads, and that's what we're striving for. We're striving for lower impact in the community as a whole, by way of development impact, length of time on pad, and also traffic. Diving back into the traffic piece of this, that's naturally a very sensitive topic for the whole township. We have two pads that are fairly close to each other, so we want to make sure that we're cognizant of what the experience is for our neighbors in those areas. We want to kind of talk through for you the, this map over here on our right. The green lines that you see on that map, those are our haul routes for the Apollo B well pad and also the Plutus well pad. And I, let me see, if you look at, let me point out a couple of facilities for you. So Apollo B well pad, Plutus well pad, these are our haul routes that will get us into these locations. This is Nichols Hill Road, and this is Fallen Timber Road here. The location that Blaine mentioned earlier, the Sito tank pad, which is where the Sito tank will be situated that we're applying for today, it's located right here next to the Plutus well pad. They actually share a driveway for your reference. And then the location of the freshwater withdrawal is down here on the river, and that's actually situated on a township-owned parcel of land that the commissioners approved and eased into agreement for earlier this month. So the, the Galene freshwater, I'm sorry, back again on traffic, the traffic impacts here are going to be supreme for the people on this, on these haul routes. So if we talk about 5,000 truckloads per day, and you multiply that number by two, those trucks need to go into the site and then leave the site, we're talking about, about potentially 10,000 truckloads per well, and if we take into account the six wells we have planned just for 2019, that's 60,000 truck trips. If we take into account the fact that we actually have 15 permitted wells within the township, that's over the course of our operations that we have approved so far, about 150,000 truck trips. So it's, again, very, very significant for the experience of, of the township. Quickly, I wanted to go through and give you a high-level description of the, the Galene freshwater withdrawal that is going to be located, or that we have proposed, rather, on that township-owned parcel, otherwise known as Life to a Park. That location is an above-ground footprint of about 640 square feet. The building itself is 20 by 32 feet, so minimum above-ground impact, and as Blaine mentioned, the other features of the facility, the pipeline, will be buried. They'll be buried from the, the actual withdrawal point into the facility, and then buried, leaving the facility, and up the right-of-way up to, up to the, the Sito pad. The last thing I wanted to touch on was the fact that we are pursuing, you know, we're actively pursuing our operations here in Elizabeth. You may know that we started to move into the Apollo B well pad to begin our drilling operations, and we are actively constructing our Plutus well pad. So we're really excited to get these operations underway, and we're equally as excited to propose these facilities because we feel that they're going to help make these projects all the more successful for the township. The thing that we're concerned by currently is timeline. So these pads will be ready for completions operations within a couple of months. It's probably going to take us a couple of months to build these facilities. So our, our request to the township as a whole is that we can be, we can be efficient in our, in our application processes. We're here tonight, and we hope to be able to address all of your questions to make sure that the, the project can get started quickly so that we can completely avoid trucking water in your township as a whole. Blaine, I think that, that wraps up my time over.
If Laura doesn't have any questions for Kim, we'll roll into Ryan's more detailed presentation on the, the layout of the, of the project as a whole.
I did have two quick questions for Kim. One, if you talked about taking on the 4,000 gallons per day out of the yacht, what does that do to the level of the yacht as far as the amount of water?
So our calculations, based off of the historic water data that, that we were able to access for the Yawka Gany River, is that that withdrawal is less than a quarter of a percent of the Yawks flow. So it's really not, so it's going to be, in our opinion, a quite negligible impact for the waterway. Yeah.
How many years would this be?
Well, we would be utilizing the water withdrawal whenever we had our completions operations running. Currently, completions operations for Apollo B and Plutus are scheduled to start in summer, so it would likely be end of summer through fall at this point, depending on how that schedule may or may not change.
Question, okay. Once you have the Sito pad up, how many gallons of water will that hold?
Actually, I don't have that number handy, but Ryan will be able to address that in his comments.
Okay, and well, before you lead to, maybe you can answer this, maybe Brian will have to answer this. Say that we have a drought, and it does happen, here in the river, the dam's down quite a bit. What exactly would you do to use water, will you be using it?
I think Brian Bilmuth, who used to work in the Department of DEP, has played, has played out of work.
No, that's okay. I, I mean, Brian, who I haven't even...
But I mean, would you still be attached to Pennsylvania American Water, so just in case there is an issue, you would use them?
We need to do that or truck water from another source, yeah.
Okay, now...
So our DEP approval, that goes through Central Office, they look at all the users on the riverway to make sure the withdrawals are acceptable. And the way it's set up, we have a pass-by flow that we always have to make sure is running through the river, and if we get down to that area, we have to shut off all operations, and we have to report that every day in our monthly reporting. So actually, when we go into the DEP website to report our monthly water usage, we have to show the rates, the volumes, and how much is actually flowing in the river.
Does DEP have any time, can they do that as well?
Yes.
Do a spot check and just see if everything is up to check.
Absolutely.
My other question is, once the Sico pad's up, you have your water at full capacity here, that water will just flow on a map of two, the Apollo and the Plutus side, am I correct on this?
It'll, it'll use pumps to push it up to the road path.
Right, so then once the excess of, when the fracking's done, the excess of water's there that gets pumped out to be cleaned, you know, talking about the storage tanks?
Right.
How many times will the trucks be coming up to pick those up? At this present time?
Right. Well, it's hard to say. I mean, we've always tried to take as much water out of that tank at the end so to minimize any trucking off that location of that water, which is, you know, best practice.
Do you have like an average of how many trucks would it be for a week, like five trucks?
I mean, at the end of the day, so that...
That's not a curiosity.
That aboveground storage tank holds about 200 gallons of water. So we'll monitor that. Obviously, you can suck it down so far, but there's still that bottom that you can't, you know, you'll start to...
Does that automatically replenish itself once it goes down a certain level within that Sico tank?
No, we'll monitor it at both, on the pump location, I guess.
You'll be monitoring, oh, okay. Now, will you do that by computer or...
It'll be either... It'll be either computer and, and with metal on site, so.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I have one question. Uh, the intake, is it actually gonna harm any of the fish or wabba?
That's a great question, no. So there are spec- special requirements from the state Fish and Boat Commission on what your screened intake has to be to minimize entrapment or impingement of any aquatic life. So we include that screening size to make sure that doesn't happen.
Does the Fish, uh, does the Fish Commission check that?
Yes.
Yeah, if Ryan, maybe this is, is what we brought Ryan, because we thought there might be some questions about other permitting, but that intake requires approval by D E P, the Coast Guard, and the Fish and Boat Commission, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And the pipe to the water, all the homeowners, all agreed? Yeah, or all the landowners?
That's correct.
If you're mostly in road right away, aren't you?
That's correct.
Okay.
And township property and the surface owner or the.
Uh, I have a question about the four million gallons. I see on your chart, that's way above anyone else, like City of New Kensington, uh, Westmoreland Colony, they're all like a million gallons. Uh, why do we need four million?
Uh, the reason that those other ones are so low is because that's all that finished water that they can provide to us as a customer. They have restrictions based on their infrastructure, that what they can actually give to people. This is raw water, straight from the stream.
Okay. And what was that pass-by again?
I believe it's six hundred and twenty C F S is our, is the pass-by that we have to make sure the river has every day. And we can check that online every day at the U S G S gauging station. So we have to make sure that we can, we're withdrawing only when we're allowed to. And I believe historical data says ninety-three point one percent of the time, there's enough water for us to withdraw.
Yeah, I mean, we don't get drunk too often, but it does occur.
Not this last year.
That's a good problem, right?
Yeah, water was not a problem. I have another question then. Why do we need a permit right away? If this is just for the, say, McCallwell, Rahalwell, why is this not temporary?
Um, that, getting that route up there, laying temporary line just isn't feasible. And, you know, with having return trips to those well pads, you know, initially, we have these wells there. But our plan is at some point down the road to come back if we want to and drill more wells. So it's best just to have everything in there.
And how many wells could go on each pad possibly?
I don't have that number in front. I mean, I think we say average like fifteen to twenty.
So this could be years?
It could be. So as you can see.
But this is only intended for those two well pads?
Initially, yes.
There could be more. Is there a build-out that we should be aware of in the township?
I don't have a build-out currently. It's produced.
But there should be probably before, as we use a plan, we should see the whole plan, the whole build-out before we do this little one-piece here, one-piece there.
If we had a plan, we could share it. We don't have a plan for anything else right now.
Okay. Let's see, Brian, have you?
I mean, just point of clarification. So if there's an additional expansion, you'd have to come back for additional approvals. And if, even if, I'm just pointing out, I'm saying, if you have to expand it to other sites, you, you wouldn't plan on, would you plan to expand the building at all? Like, everything would remain the same? Like, the impact would remain the same, right?
It'd just be additional pipeline.
But what about your pumps? If you're going to go further than assuming?
Somewhere along the road, you would probably have to add pumps if you had to push it out further. It would, it would, they most likely be a temporary setup just for that you can demove as needed.
Well, why don't we have Ryan walk through the, the pipe plans? And he'll get a, get a little bit deeper in some of the details of some of the questions that the planning commission's been raising.
All right. So it's a little hard to see on the wall here. I'll do my best to point things out. This would be the Yawke Gany River down here. Lightdale Road that snakes around the Great Allegheny Passage rail trail through here and that will be Lightdale. The intake structure can be approximately sixty feet out into the river. Will be piped back to the pump house located within the township property. From that point, the water will be pumped through a buried water line up the hill to Lightdale Road. And then following Lightdale Road up around through the intersection of Fallen Timber and then up the hill to the Seado Tank pad.
Ryan, maybe if we could, just talking about intake, you know, a little more detail on, on how the intake works and the like.
Sure. So John, do you want to switch to sheet C zero one, that might be easier? Let's see here. Actually, the last, the, yeah, first, first page. All right. So it's again, kind of tough to see on the. Board, but, um, this section over here would be the river channel. So the heavy line here would be the top water surface. This structure here is the actual intake structure. So on the bottom of the riverbed, there's gonna be a half-barrel intake with an aquatic screen, like Brian mentioned. That will allow water to naturally flow via gravity into this intake pipe. And then will, by gravity flow, will flow back to a wet well located beneath the pump house. At that point, the pumps, which will be located up in the pump well, will suck the water up into there and then push it out through the distribution system.
And there'll be any kind of warning signs or anything if, if the intake?
Yes. So one of the permits that we had to, or one of the reviews that we had to go through is a navigation plan that gets reviewed by the Fish and Boat Commission and the U S Coast Guard because they share jurisdiction of the Yawk in this area. That's still under review because it's pending approval by D E P. But there will be warning buoys installed in the vicinity of, in the vicinity of this structure.
Shift into the pump house now. How many pumps are there going to be?
So it will be two pumps located up in the pump house.
Now, originally, the plan showed three, two plus a backup, but backup's going to be eliminated, right?
Correct. Yeah. So Huntley and Huntley have been working with McKim and Creed to value engineer this system. And they determined based on the use that it's probably not worth, worth it to have a, a backup pump on site all the time for them. So they're gonna eliminate the, the third backup pump and just have the, the two pumps.
And again, the size of the buil- the pump house building is gonna be how wide?
It'll be twenty feet wide by thirty-two feet long.
You know, what's the maximum height that it'll have?
Uh, so the roof is gonna be sloped to the one direction, so the maximum height will be about fourteen feet on the high end.
Yeah.
Now, that's, if you want to switch to the, the second sheet, that shows a close-up of the building.
I've handed out the board. If you have a copy, is this a rendering that McKim and Creed has prepared for the?
Can I ask a quick question, Hunter? Did you get permission to, to the bike trail, to have the bikes underneath their railroad path?
Yes. We submitted an application in October to the, it actually runs through the Omega Rail Management Corporation because they still have jurisdiction over that right away. That has been basically pending township approval. So they've not acted on that application as they've been waiting for the township to act, so.
You didn't require to provide road liability insurance under anything?
We did. Yeah, we had to, so we had to submit the, the trail and the railroad. The railroad has done their review, pushed on to the trail, and the trail, like I said, is waiting to hear back. So we wanted to have an agreement with.
Usually there are like ten million dollar limits in the insurance that they give. I seen in here was only two million.
What, what's, what's that for?
Well, there's an insurance certificate in this package. Other than that, max limit was two million.
Whenever they request, we would have given it.
So that was requested by who? The Rail, you know, corporation, the two million? Is that what you're saying?
I would say, is that, is that the, the?
Are you sharing it through township or is it?
That's for the, that's for the township. So that's, that meets the township requirements. The one for the railroad would be separate and go through the.
The railroad, the trail.
Yeah, they would have their own separate. They would have to prove that to them. It would be us.
Wouldn't that be part of the?
Their application is in there, but it would be under the approval of the, once they get their permit to do that crossing.
At, at one point on the rail crossing, we'll go back to the building here.
I'm sorry if that.
No, that's okay. Grab it while the font's floating out there. This will be constructed in a way that, that the trail will not be disrupted, right?
That's correct. So they will, they'll basically construct the water line right up to the edge of the trail for both sides. And then they'll build a temporary route around what they've already destructed to allow the trail remain open while they cross the trail.
They're not going to be bored with that?
No, so it'll be an open-cut crossing.
That, what, what depth?
I would say, I believe, minimum four feet cover.
Your detail, one of your details only shows three feet.
So I think that was the minimum required by the trail. However, as part of Huntley's specifications or internal specifications, they prefer to go deeper than that.
You need to cover frost lines at that point. I mean, you need forty-two inches of minimum for frost. The typical water line's forty-eight inches of pipe.
So that, that's what, they will be four feet deep. What we're saying is the trail or the railroad requirements are a minimum of, of three feet for a utility crossing.
And there'll be signage and temporary fencing for safety purposes while that's current?
Correct.
And how long is it anticipated it will take to, to do that, cut across the?
It'll cross that in two days.
Yeah, just a few days for that, so.
They'll fix that to the standards of what the trail is.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, the, as part of the trail or the, yeah, the trail crossing permit, there's backfill requirements to make sure that, that there's no settlement, you know, through the.
So is it gonna be a permanent easement or is it gonna be temporary, come across the trail through the railroad?
Oh, it would be permanent, yeah.
So they're gonna allow that to be in place until hell freezes.
Yes.
Let's hope not. Okay. We're happy to answer questions on that, this trail crossing. I know that's a, kind of a concern. So if there are any other questions, certainly chime in. Back on the building though, Ryan, McKim and Creed prepared the, the rendering that I handed out, right?
That's correct.
And what, what are the building materials gonna be?
So it would be a concrete foundation, split block face walls, as you can see on the rendering and on the exhibit on the board. The roof material will be steel with a, a rubber coating.
And I know that there's a question raised by an engineer about lighting. Does the rendering show the lighting?
Uh, yes. If you look just left of the doorway, there's a little wall-mounted light there. This would be typical to what you would see on any residential structure. It'll be, you know, minimal, minimal flare there.
You guys opened up suggestions on materials and, because I've seen some, they, they have decorative exteriors, different colors. You know, I don't know what your plan is as far as color schemes and visual impact, but the commissioners or the planning commission may have, you know, suggestions.
Yeah, no, uh, the plan is concrete base unit, it's block, we're going with the split face, which is the more decorative, you know, variable surface. Obviously, color choices would be certainly up, up for discussion. We haven't, we haven't chosen anything. Right now, I think our, our, our stand, we're looking at like a sandstone color. But yeah, if it needed to be something darker.
I can just see that being a question.
Right.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna be gray, standard gray. We're looking at something right now more as that, that sandstone, like the light, like.
What about, what about shrubbery or decorative plants around? Do you have any plans for that right now?
Right now, we didn't have anything planned. Right now, it's just gonna be recreated to establish grade. But, uh, there's certainly options for that to be done around. I don't think Huntley and Huntley would have any objection to anything being put near the facility.
You guys, because this is located in the flood plain, right?
Yeah.
Are you guys have any concerns or anything with, with the river rises? Are there gonna be any, any problems?
Well, that, that's the reason we have to go into the zoning here next week is that any building in the flood plain requires approval from the zoning hearing board. So, answer the question.
Is it designed to flood or is there, is there anti-floation on the foundation system?
Yeah, so.
Why we brought this guy?
Yeah. So as, as Ryan talked about, again, John shouldn't go with Huntley, Huntley. I believe with McKim and Creed on behalf of Huntley, Huntley. So the, the intake structure, as they said, is a half-barrel stream. It's, it's designed to reduce impingement and treatment of aquatic species. It's gravity. So the connection between that wet well and the stream is common. Water will be able to flow, you know, the, the depth of water within the structure of the pump facility will be common with the river. So yes, the river rises, it'll, it'll also rise. There's a point and there's a manual shut-off that that, that can be stopped. But to help with, with uplift, that water will stay common to prevent, you know, buoyancy under normal operating conditions and then will stop. There, there will be some other, you know, things to assist with anti-floation. The, the wet well is gonna come as a pre-cast units that'll be stacked. Those of all, those will all be designed by a professional engineer certified with anti-floation baffles for the conditions that have come back in the geotechn reports for, uh, the normal static water level as well as higher water.
Place tension tank with the map on there.
It'll have a map on there, but it is pre-cast, pre-tensioned. They'll, they'll stack up there. They're very similar to like mammals, except for on a larger scale. That'll stack up, but right now, we're at about twenty-eight foot of depth below the current ground surface. And it will extend above the ground surface a little bit because we wanted to raise our finished floor elevation for a couple of reasons, just to get, get above some of the flood elevation. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be completely inundated under, under storms that happen to occur.
What's the end game for this thing when you guys are done? It's gonna have to go this whole system? Well, they're gonna build it. They're gonna install a line. They're gonna have, you're gonna have a pump station down there. When they're done drilling, what happens to the system?
You're talking about after like sixty years?
Well, I have to, assuming they take ten years to build out their pad, their well.
I thought, I could be wrong, but don't you have to break it all down when you're finished? Is there a time limit to do that? Yeah, I thought that was apparently agreement originally that anything that they built, whether it's wellhead or whatever, that you would break down. Like, you break on that when you're whole finished?
So for a facility like this, I think.
I thought that was.
Obviously, I can't look into a crystal ball and hopefully I'm retired. But, um, I think at the end of the day, you know, this facility can be used for other things, you know, whether it's important to us or someone else, we could, you know, you know, if we wanted to leave it to the township or we could, we could demove it. It's pretty easy to demove and decommission a pipeline, so.
One last quick question and then I would like you to go ahead and continue afterwards. When we get heavy rains, the river gets very muddy and very silky. What do you do about that? Is that all that loom and everything go inside the water and is there a filtration for that? Do you know what I'm saying? Before we get heavy rains, and what you'll see clear is no longer clear. It's pretty muddy.
We, we do. And some of that will be operational. As Ryan mentioned, that there's, there's gonna be, this isn't gonna be a hundred percent automated. There's gonna be some automation in there that prevents certain things, like as we talked about, like drought conditions that'll shut the pumps off and not allow them to be operated during low-flow conditions in the Yawk to protect the, that water resource. Likewise, if there's, there's issues operationally that'll impact, you know, the water going up, up to the Seado tank, they, they can shut that off. So it's gonna be more, more based on operational considerations.
I'm still a little confused here. So if the water is muddy and, is there a way of filtration or are they just?
Filtration, so yeah, anything real small, silt-sized, we'll, we'll, we'll pass into it. But yeah, other than that, that's all.
You have a single intake on two pumps or?
Single. Uh, well, each pump has its own intake. They're vertical turbine pumps with columns. The pumps that actually submerge at the bottom.
So you gotta do pumping out of the wet well then?
Yes, that's right. And, and there's, there's a little bit of elevation there from the bottom of the intake, so it's not gonna be sucking mud. And there's gonna be access to go in there that that can be backed out and cleaned out, you know, as part of the operation and maintenance of the facility.
Are you leasing the land where this is being put on or is the township just giving you right-of-way? Are you paying a lease payment for the land or are they just?
Yeah, she's right-of-way.
Yeah, there's a, uh, Huntley's paying a, a lease payment.
For how long?
Kim, can you speak to that?
I, I wanna say that the, the term is renewable after fifteen years. That, that agreement was executed earlier this month and I'm sure attainable. In fact, I think it's in our application materials. Yes.
The lease is, the terms of the lease are in here.
It's a thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
But I don't know what the term was. Uh, what would happen if, you know, reading the paper recently about EQT and Rice Energy, what would happen if Huntley and Huntley no longer has control of this pump house, water line, and so forth?
Well, like any zoning approval, there's. Well, like any zoning approval, your solicitor can talk to you about this. It runs with the land. It can be transferred, theoretically could be transferred to another company.
But the township will have their control of that?
Typically, yeah, I confirm your solicitor on that, but typically zoning can't limit who owns a particular use. It can only address the use and the details of the use itself.
Conditions probably would have applied to the new, I mean, it was also the same condition.
I mean, there's certain permits like road bonding and things like that that would have to be transferred, but the zoning itself, that carries over to whoever owns the particular use, whether it's a house or, or a pump facility like this.
I'm sorry, Ryan, excuse me, if you want to continue with this one.
Yeah, this, Ryan, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to point out about the building itself. I think we probably covered most of the issues, but is there anything else?
No, I think that was it.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
The ordinance requires that any pump building be at least two hundred feet away from any protective structure, basically occupied from. What did, did the drawing C one hundred show that those distances are here?
Right, so the closest protected structure is approximately four hundred and fourteen feet directly to southwest from the intake facility.
And now one of the other issues causing concern would be noise. So here, the noise generated of the two pumps, right?
That's correct.
And now there'd be clothes, the building, did Huntley commission a sound impact assessment for the building itself?
They did, and they hired acoustical control. I think you're familiar with them. They did both an ambient sound study out here as well as sound impact assessment. Both of those have been submitted to township. The ambient survey came back in the neighborhood of like fifty-four decibels around here. I believe the ordinance requirements allow for five decibels over your ambient and or fifty-five decibels. So that puts like the allowable decimal range around sixty decibels for this site. When the sound impact assessment was ran with the pumps inside of the block building, the impacts from those pumps came out around like thirty decibels. So we're, you know, the, the structure itself is greatly knocking down the, the impact of the sound from the pumps.
Do you know what the decibels are at the, at the trail and the Blackdale Pavilion?
Uh, so again, I mean, that, I don't have it in front of me. It was submitted with the application, but we're like in the range of thirty decibels.
Well, the, the, what the, the sound, the, the ambient was taken somewhere, I think around the trail.
Somewhere near the trail. Yeah, I think it was about in the middle of the.
So the ambient there is almost fifty-five. The, the analysis that, who's controlled it included that the, the, the noise level would not, would be less than thirty if any of these, the points.
I was going to say, what's the closest resident or occupancy?
That, that house is four hundred and twenty-eight feet away. And the highest decimal reading of the closest house was in the upper quarters.
Okay.
Which is real quiet.
Veronica, maybe you could help with this. It seems like the company that did this, though, they said they didn't, pre-existing sound sources such as road traffic, weather, animals, air traffic, other ambient sounds were not included in the models. Weather conditions like wind speed, wind direction, temperature, humidity, foliage, direction, cloud cover, none of that was used. Measured sound levels may differ from the model. And then it says there's no warranty expressed or implied, just made or intended for these consulting services or by furnishing oral or written reports. So they don't stand behind their reports? Is that what this is saying?
The one you're looking at is them modeling something. There's no guarantee when you're not physically taking those measurements. And so, I mean, things can change.
So they can, this is very general.
And I don't want to say how accurate it is. I can't speak to that. I didn't do it. It could vary. However, if you look at the overall chart on the back, because it's kind of hard to see how they match up, the highest I think is twenty-eight is what they're modeling. And they could go up to sixty, so. But yes, it could vary. That, those numbers are not set in stone until the facility's actually built, but they do, yeah, they do a model.
And is there any chance, though, that we can have monitors placed permanently at the, at the boundaries that would record and document what the sound levels are?
I don't know if we would request them permanently, but we could have them do a sound test after everything's up and running. If there are no issues with the sound at that point in time, we can remove them. If there becomes an issue later, we can bring them out again.
I think that would be good to do because this is a permanent right of way, though. They're not talking temporary, which would change a lot of things.
Right. Just for experience with sewage pump stations, it's sort of the same facility. So we have those located around and they tend not to make noise. We have some locally within the township that we don't monitor sound. They're very similar in design. So if the pumps are similar, where you get a noise from a pump station is if they're using a generator or something outside where they will have electric here. So that'll be, the noise from the pump station will be very minimal. But we can, we can request that once it's installed to, to listen to it. But if you're, if you're curious about it, one of the pumps, sewage pump stations will be very equivalent.
Well, it's on township property and it's, you know, park and people might actually want to use it. And so, and we, we have the trail, so I think we need to be proactive. There's enough distractions right now. Because we also have sound coming down from the fracking operations.
Right, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that we monitor.
So we'll have both coming, you know, and it's at the bottom, it's in the river valley. I think it's important that we check on the noise.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions?
I'm on from the, from the audience. Do you have a question or not?
Oh, Matt, what do you think?
It's up to you because you already got a couple of.
If he's moving from the building just where the electrics are, it's going to be up high enough above the.
First of all, give your name, please. I'm sorry.
Murray Koshy, I live in Boston, Ottawa. I'm familiar with this kinds of things. Is the electric going to be in that building? Are they going to be elevated? Where's, where's the electric?
Oh, yeah, so West Penn Power will be bringing power up, down from Blackdale Road. There'll be a transformer that'll be located, just.
Just hold it away from me a little bit.
Yeah, so, but a lot of that will come up in the, the variance because that's part of, I think those facilities.
Yeah, Larry, this is specifically on the use, so you, your, most of your questions, I think you'll want to go to the, the variance here because they're floodplain related.
Okay.
It's also, though, remember they're asking for conditional use in all zones and Larry lives in a different zone, but he might have concerns about pumps because the water lines and.
Yeah, his question about the, the location of the electric, which is covered under our floodplain ordinance.
I know that. Where's it going to be in relation to this building? Is it going to be above the building? In the building? Where, where's the electric?
There can be electricity in the building where located is regulated by our floodplain ordinance.
So it has elevated.
Flood elevation, yes.
Well, the transformer stands at where it.
It shows the transformer right in the right of way, right up to the building.
I didn't understand that completely. They haven't sized the pumps yet, so it's a function of how much power they're taking there and where you put it. And you're going to work that out yourself. You haven't?
No, it's been designed.
It has, it's not in the books.
It has been submitted to the horsepower.
Yes, really, I just, I searched for that for quite a while. I missed.
We're going to move on, so.
Go ahead.
Do we have any questions, concerns with the board here? No? Okay. Wait, a motion in this group? Okay, I need a motion. We're just to go forward to the commissioners on both the young freshwater intake and water line. Make the motion. Anybody?
I think there should be some conditions settled.
Oh, do you? Okay, well, then we're going to hold on. How about the Seaco freshwater above ground storage tank? We have a motion for that. Or do we want to hold off on that too?
I think they tie one another.
I'm sorry? They're separate. They're separate.
One is just.
Yeah, I would say, excuse me, if you want.
One of the function of a.
Right. We can still have a motion if we approve.
Why don't, why don't you ask, what is suggestions would be?
Yeah, what would you want?
Well, number one, what's going to happen to this thing when we're done?
So it's already in the lease agreement that it has to be taken down?
Right, they have to take initiative and break it down.
I didn't see that.
Or they said they can do this.
And, and how soon after other use.
Okay, now, do you, the lease drawing provided in here, I think, is a draw?
They're, they're near, they're by, we're eighty percent.
So they're not one hundred percent.
When we go to the building.
Yeah, they're, they're, we'll have to submit more detailed drawings for the building permit.
So you'll be coming back with.
Well, not to the planning commission, but it'll come to the, the, the staff.
What, what kind of pressure you guys generate at maximum head?
Oh, man, I don't have it in front of me. I want to say it's like at, at the pump heads, like one twenty-five P S M.
At the pump?
At the pump, at the pump.
And you're playing with lines building your pumping.
It'll, it'll be almost zero. It's cost a hill. It'll be about one twenty-five at pump head.
All right, because it, number one is the three-foot thing. Number two, I see you got some pipe running over eighteen percent. I don't see no, no slope anchors, anchor pipe in the ground.
Uh, there's, there's thrust blocks and trench.
Well, thrust blocks are horizontal movement.
Yeah, we have detailed drawings that are going to be part of the application, a part of reconstruction back.
And then as far as there are relief and check valves in one?
Right now, there's two combination relief valves planned, one near, what's that look like? They were passive wise, they would turn following timber road and then one up to Seaco tank pad and so.
And do you use restrained joints on all your elbows?
All restraint joints on the ductal iron, the HCP will be thermal fuse, so it'll be basically one continuous pipe for the HCP section.
And it's class fifty-two or?
Uh, class fifty-two from ductal irons.
Are we good? Any more questions, concerns?
Now, still, the one point I would like to clarify, I mentioned that the tank and the water line approval go hand in hand. Would like to point out that in the event that the water line not be approved, the tank could still be used to store water that would be trucked to the site. That would reduce the, I guess, the, like, the peak number of trucks would be coming to the site at one time because they could spread out the trips and fill up the tank ahead of time and then use that water for their completion operation.
Again, it's two separate applications, but obviously the goal is to have it integrated.
Blaine, you're, you're obviously aware there's other approvals that are necessary still, including your, your floodplain variance and whatever. So obviously, you're going to, the least contingency you're going to have would be contingent on the other approvals.
Yeah, we, we understand that. I mean, that goes without saying, we have these other approvals that, I mean, there are about eight or nine malls in the area here. We have about half of them knocked off so far. And so I, it's pretty important to us, okay, I mean, if you do have conditions you want to impose, fine. But we, and because of the time constraints that Kim referred to, delaying this another month would push the commissioners into May and would really, at that point, it would be very problematical whether the system could be up and running when we want to start fracking a problem. So ideally, we could move this along to the commissioners. That would be our preference tonight.
I, I have another question about the tank pad then, since you're drawing them together. On the drawing here, you have a roadway on the tank pad for trucks. And it says in the narrative, there could be ten trucks at a time on this, on this tank pad. Is this just during construction or is this part of the entire project?
Yeah, so this would be in the event that the water line and the intake structure is not approved and they have to truck water to the site. If the tank is approved, they'd be able to unload water into that tank and then pump up to the pad. So the, the truck circulation that's shown on there, basically this just shows to show, you know, circulation of the trucks around the site. Sure that there's a safe path for the trucks to move around the pad.
But there maybe won't be any trucks.
So ideally, if a water line can be approved and installed, then the, the number of trucks would be greatly reduced.
In fact, that's what probably be a big up truck.
Right.
Check the site every day.
Okay, and it says in the narrative that there would be three pumps on the pad, but it only shows two. Where would the other pump be?
I don't, I don't recall there being three pumps yet handy or I could.
Originally, they said. Well, this is the tank pad. Before, he was talking about.
No, I'm talking about two pumps at the pump house itself. The plan showed three, but one of those is going to be eliminated.
But in the narrative for McCall, it, it says three and it's only showing two. I'm just asking. And the other thing, will there be any chemicals stored at the pump house or at the tank pad? I see there's temporary chemicals, but then I saw things for down at the pump house that there would be chemicals stored. Is that not true? There would be no chemicals, no diesel fuel, no gasoline stored at either location?
Yeah, there's, in fact, you point, if, if pump house, the only source of power is electric. There, there, there's no combust, internal combustion engine at all. There's no storage of chemicals. The only thing that's going to be at either of these two points is freshwater coming out with yawn. That's it.
Okay, so any diesel fuel that was mentioned in those things in the narrative, they go away after construction, are you saying? Because they thought it said for the light standards that there had to be diesel.
I'm talking about the, the tank pad or the pump or something?
Yeah.
The tank pad.
Yeah, the same.
The tank pad is already approved. We're just here to talk about the tank.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we're getting on track there.
So we've already approved everything. I thought we just.
The tank pad has, the cedar tank pad.
The pad was approved.
By the board.
But I'm talking about what's going on in the pad.
No, no, the only thing we're talking about here is a tank of above ground.
So if there's going to be anything else, they have to come back again?
No, the pad's already approved. This is just for the tank.
This is for the tank.
It's part of oil and gas operation.
Yeah, I understand the pad was approved, but I'm talking about the tank's going to go on the pad. But are there other things going on the pad, like these light standards with diesel and so forth?
No, not that I'm aware of. You're not having anything on there, right? Right away.
There will be lights. There will be lights in the, the photometric plan says that.
And your pumps are probably going to be.
Because the lights have to be down, so they're not going to be facing up or down, so. But, okay, I, I was concerned about the gasoline or the diesel that was going to use to power these things that they mentioned in the. Is there a chemical light on there?
Any, any fuel that would be stored there would be minimal and it would be inside of secondary containment as, as is required.
And that, that's spelled out. I don't have it in front of me, but that's spelled out.
It says from the narrative, tank pad drawings, four light plants, each equipped with a tank storing forty-five gallons of diesel fuel, three wire pumps each equipped with a tank storing two hundred and fifty gallons of diesel fuel. It's in the narrative.
It's in, it's in our binder.
Right, that's where I got that. So I'm asking, is this diesel going away?
So when, when the pumps, the, the pumps and the light standards will only be in operation when they're fracking their wells. When, because those are usually rented, correct? So they rent those facilities, bring them in when they need them, and then when they're not using them, they return them. So at that point, they wouldn't be stored.
So over the ten, fifteen, twenty years that you're fracking these pads, this stuff will come and go?
Yeah, so it would come for the, you know, two or three weeks that it takes to crack a well, they would be in there and then they would label when they're done, done with each pad.
Yeah, because one of your things showed a tank battery and I was confused where a tank battery was going.
Which one does this?
Out of the binder.
So this is actually related to the well pad. So that's not the tank pad.
But there was a tanks.
So that's, that's part of the drilling operations on the, the well pad, so it's not related to the freshwater storage tank.
That's, you referring to Plutos?
Correct, yeah. So that, that's part of the overall site response, emergency response plan.
Do you drill any hopeful wells on the pad here?
Yeah, they have a pad in Upper Borough Township, Western Walling County.
There's an order, a couple of weeks ago, about one, one well depleting, the other well, you experienced that? Not helping.
Did you get all your, your questions answered? Because I even were saying about conditions.
I just, I'm mainly concerned about the end game. I, I think it should be some kind of option there.
For what? To tear it down?
Yeah.
I think it, personally, I think it's. I think it... personally, I think it's gonna be... I think they're gonna sell it to the water company to be used as a freshwater intake, and I think the borough, the township should have first rates on that, you know, when it comes times to have a first rate refusal to assume ownership of it.
Right, so, yeah, I don't know if that's really at play for your decision here tonight. That might be something...
I would just say so, reclamation is part of the approval, you know, for the... for the commissioners that consent.
Sure. Yeah, and I'm... you know, again, if it's not part of the agreement, it's something that we certainly, I'm sure, could discuss, apparently, when they're done with it, if they wanna give it to us.
Well, I think at that point, I think at that point, it's too late.
What... what do you mean?
Well, at that point, they already got their... got their... what they wanted out of it.
Well, they already have it. They are... it's already leased anyway, right now.
It's leased right now with the restriction on removing it, correct?
Yeah, when they're done.
When they're done.
And that would include all of the pipes going to the...
What do you want them to do? You want them to give it to us at the end of the lease?
I want you to have first rate of refusal.
I'm sure we could do an amendment to the lease if that's something that they would be open to. I don't think they would want it anymore, so I'm sure, you know.
So it definitely could be...
Yeah, I don't know what we... I don't know what the township... I don't know.
We'd have the option, though.
To do what?
You could release the facility to the water.
What?
For water, that should be.
Down the line.
There's already water down. I mean, I assume there's already water lines down there. What they're gonna do is actually pump it.
Like Ray Howard having problems getting enough water, probably, and, yeah, I mean...
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah.
Now, the township owns the... the property that this is going on. Now, let's say later on, since it's supposed to be for recreation for everyone, could we ever put anything on the right way? On the surface, or is that land that we have lost?
I'm not sure how I agree with my reason. I assume it's lost. I mean, typically, when you do that type of agreement, it's not like they're gonna want people... Us building things close to that most... I mean, not that we would do that anyway, but it's just the... it's just the land around it and then for the line. That's the only land that we...
Yeah, and the... the lines will be covered back up.
Yeah, it's not like...
People will be able to traverse across it. It just can't build on top.
Right.
I'm just concerned.
Right.
Yeah, I understand. But I just, in the future, I don't know what people wanna do with it. I mean, it's our land.
Yeah, we're gonna lose the entire parcel to them. It's just around that...
Is... is there a reclamation plan?
No, there's only... there's not a plan that I'm aware of. It just says that they're gonna basically tear it down and restore it to the condition.
Is there a bond posted?
No.
I think not posted bond for reclamation.
It wasn't part of... it's not part of the agreement.
Look at dollar channel and the problems we're having there. I think maybe we should... should be something.
I mean, you... you know, I go to mine... I go to mine someplace. I got a present of reclamation on, you know, we got... otherwise, I got business that...
Yeah, but I mean, you're talking about something that's probably a whole... a whole more value than what it would cost to tear it out of some twenty-by-thirty home state. I mean, I'm not talking about huge dollars to do that, but...
You've got several thousand foot of line.
Yeah.
You know, it's the... Yeah, there should be some kind of... some kind of bond or guaranteeing... guaranteeing.
Again, I don't know if that has...
Yeah, I think that's more...
Do you agree?
That's...
The easement's in place. It's...
Yeah.
It's recorded.
I'm sort... I'm sort of going forward as the relationship evolves, hopefully, we'll be glad to continue to have a dialogue with the township.
That's a kind of issue with the request and now whether the easement's in place.
Yeah, they're just requesting it on use itself.
Right, so, you know, if they're... if they're requesting to propose construction of something and the use of something, then that... then your... your reclamation would fall into that category.
I think they would have something to do with the reclamation or something.
That's fine. I mean, you guys, you're regulatory, so if you wanna say you wanna do a dish on a... a bond for reclamation or something like that.
Do you want that? I think it'd be quite a time. I have no problem. She'll pass that on.
Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, are we good? Um, George, Mark, are we good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, first of all, do we wanna have a motion to have that put in? Is that how this would work, Pat?
Sure, you can ask for a motion to approve the Galen freshwater intake and water line contingent on prior other approvals that are necessary for floodplain and also contingent upon cyclic, uh, bond for slight limitations.
Okay, we're gonna go by what he says, cause for me to try to repeat that, I know I'm gonna mess that up. So did you get that? Everyone here got that? Will that go under just for number one? Okay, so can we have a motion to have that go forward?
Move.
Okay, David, give me a second. George, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next. Seco freshwater above ground storage tank, by now, a motion to a good... forward with it? I don't have anything. David, second. Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe we're finished.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next is the zoning ordinance review.
This drawing, what's the size of the tank?
Um, can... excuse me, can we...
I thought you were adjourned.
He got... no, no.
Yeah, cause we're... we're going on to something different here. We're not done.
I put some time in on this and you say, "This is a public meeting or not? Public people speak or not?" How do you sign up? But you're talking about a size of the tank. What do you think the size of the tank is?
A hundred ninety feet diameter, twelve feet tall, and it will store possibly two point four million gallons.
Okay, and that's not complete, but they show another tank size on the drawing, of sixty thousand barrels.
Okay.
Is there gonna be two? You said four over tanks. Was it a one tank?
One tank.
Then it was the big one, a hundred ninety diameter.
Yeah.
Big tank.
One tank.
Okay.
That itself is...
I'm trying to try to...
Planning and name only there.
Okay. Next is the zoning ordinance review.
If I can just clarify, this is a lot of review of... it's just a review of the zoning that I suggested, particularly with Matt before planning, very much for planning, for some cleaning up of our...
Matt, could you speak a little louder? There's a lot of conversation.
Yeah, John's speaking. I... I'm not speaking. John is speaking.
Yeah, we can just review some sections of our zoning, current zoning ordinance, because there are some things lacking. I'm not asking for any new uses or anything like that. We have some accessory structures that are not defined and don't have setbacks, um, you know, that are clearly defined in the zoning. So like, you know, and we'll get that and so we can kinda correct some, uh, discrepancies in our zoning ordinance.
I think one of the problems was like zebras and things of this nature. Trying to find some sort of a setback of, you know, between houses, maybe between yards and so forth. There's no, I guess, clear definitive answer to that or definition. So I think what we're trying to get here is to try to find some sort of resolution for that.
Order of side yards, rear yards, setback. Order of side rear yards.
We have side rear yards that are under our zoning. If you look at like, uh, accessory structures, it says referred to section fifteen oh three, and it lays out specific accessory structures.
Thank you.
Swimming pools, sports court, uh, private sports courts, fences, walls, satellite dish, radio, TV antennas, canopies and similar structures, but under canopies and similar structures, canopies and similar permanent freestanding roof structures without wall shall be permitted to cover outdoor seasonal display and sales areas. And then we have residential accessory structures, storage structures, and attached garages. So like, uh, and structures, accessories, non-residential structures in buildings.
It's probably something where we need to clean up the language, just to have more of a catch-all. So like, our accessory structures are so specific that there isn't anything... there isn't anything for everything else, yes.
We don't have the, you know, all accessory structures shall be these setbacks. We haven't broken down, but we're missing kind of the catch-all phrase, you know what I mean? Cause under the zoning, it's like, if somebody wants to put a gazebo, what's their setback? Or a parking lot. I mean, it's... it's a canopy structure.
It's a same shed or something, but it's just... it's the way the definition reads. It's not... there's nothing in there. John and I would... so it's just, that's one of the issues. I think the idea here is maybe before the next meeting, John and I will come up with the ones that he dealt with, cause he deals with that on a daily basis, right? Like, he gets an application and has to figure out where it goes. So he has some that he and I will clean up. If there's... if you guys can do a review of the ordinance, if there's anything in there that you see, you know, or you've dealt with personally or you've heard somebody deal with, something in there that you think needs cleaned up and needs some attention, let us know because, um, if we're gonna clean up that, it's better to do one... it's cheaper for us to do one ordinance amendment and just amend it all at once, one advertising, one public hearing, and just get everything adopted at once rather than piecemealing it. So if there's some things, you know, any ideas that you guys have or anything you see, take a look at that.
As far as like sheds, I can... what if someone built a shed twenty years ago and it's...
So it's gonna be probably pre-existing, non-conforming, so it'll be grandfathered, so, yeah.
Is there a difference between sheds they're currently building and the concrete or any ones they're just sitting on?
No.
So they'll be the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's more...
Think about canopies, um, like I was saying, the gas station, like the B P station, and it's saying a ten-foot from the side yard. Does that mean the B P could build a canopy?
Well, the canopy's only for seasonal.
I mean, it said seasonal display.
Okay.
Yeah, there is...
Like, sure.
There is a...
Which I don't even understand that one really. I guess you put a canopy over a Christmas display or something. I don't have a...
I think it's temporary sales display. Oh, but I mean, the problem, that's... that's all it says for where it would be permitted. And then it gives you, you know, specifics that, you know, like, just like play... play equipment.
Yeah.
You know, everything, you know, that people find or wanna be about putting in their yards.
Right, yeah, we need... yeah, definitely on that one, on accessory structures, we need more of a... of a wider definition or a catch-all.
So do we need something this... tonight or...
No, 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 I think this is just discussion. If you can, between this month and next month, maybe look at it, highlight whatever sections you think might be wrong, and have a discussion. And then the following month, I would prob... I will wanna implement. So in May, maybe we'll have something to recommend to get implemented.
What section is that in, John?
Fifteen oh three. And then I know we had like another section, um...
You're mainly, John, you're mainly concerned with items from there for now, or...
No, I mean, all of section fifteen oh three gives you requirements for accessory structures. And it specifically lists several out, but it doesn't speak to more, some of the more common ones. Carports, zebras, carloads, because it defines its storage structure, but not other types of structures, you know what I mean?
So it might be a good idea to look over all of that section in the zoning. And you said there's nothing in Elizabeth, um, ordinance, township ordinance is about anything like that?
No, it's all under our zoning. And, you know, we're, you know, um...
So, um, that's definitely something I think we need to address. Also, you mentioned the ball...
There's another one. Yeah, that'd be in discussed with, uh, K L H N, I believe, Matt, um, the conditional use of purpose. The tiny six mil, we're looking at, just to allow, uh, one K O one point one, to allow extra time to... As some applications come in are a little more complicated, to maybe changing that to thirty days.
Yeah, right now, it's ten, so, I mean, just a... just a thought.
So you want thirty days instead? Would that be more reasonable?
Where's that's coming from is they tend to be with a land development plan, and you need to review the land development plan in order to determine what kind of conditions could be put on something. So that was the... that was how we were looking at it.
They should be submitted to the meeting prior to the meeting prior, so you can talk about it, then she can make the changes, and then you can put it on the next meeting, is what should be.
Okay. That sounds great.
We can definitely... that's all this office has to do.
So it would be like forty-five days to forty days or something.
Well, usually with the thirty days, that's enough to cover. I mean, that's what we make.
Do you want to maybe go on to the...
I mean, I would have no good luck now, just taking time, just going through the zoning.
Yeah, please do.
Veronica did have a special note here.
So I think we're all section fourteen hundred.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Sexual sphere, the same with fifteen hundred.
We're on check out.
The two ones that we love the most. So I... I think if we can at least address the two, that's a little bit more, um, because I never think it's true about things like that. I think it might be important.
I, yeah, a lot of it, I would just like it a little more clarified.
More defined.
You know, yeah, because, you know, some of these are more common.
Right.
You know, I've been applying the general, you know, storage structure setbacks, for lack of anything else, which I think, you know, those setbacks would work fine for pretty much everything else. But I know Veronica found some, uh, something else that's lacking here.
I've found... which one?
One thing that came up in the B two zoning, if you look at the side yard setback requirements, there's a... I'm assuming it's typo, that it repeats the same adjoining... The same... Any S E R C, as opposed to any district. So I think one of them needs change, just read all other districts. Um, and then another thing to look at...
What section was that?
That is in B two, or sorry, section one one oh two.
One one oh two?
Yeah, point out the side yards.
So that's in section one thousand?
Eleven oh two.
Is that under like area and bulk regulations or...
It's under I M F. Yeah. On page sixty-seven, I think.
Which page? Seventy-seven. Okay, so it's in article X or ten, uh, page sixty-seven. Anything else at this time that we should discuss?
The parking chart, I did notice in this stuff that came through, and I can review more of that. Um, auto sales is not within that. There are requirements for parking for an auto.
Where would I find this at?
That is in the parking.
What page? Just page one oh one. Everyone has the zoning, total zoning in the package binder that John gave you or not that? Okay, so that you're aware of that? Or you can look for someone.
Off-street parking is in article S V one.
What's the page, John, if you have a question?
Go to page one sixty-six, and that starts the parking chart.
Thank you. One sixty-six. And what... what's it that you were talking about, so?
Um, for auto sales, we don't have any requirements for this parking.
Oh, okay.
What was the page though?
It depends on how you wanna limit the park. Do you make them have a required space?
Wouldn't that function to the dimensioning of the block then?
Right, but with not having anything, they can cram as many cars as they want to and wear whatever they want.
You'd need a...
Yes, that's what, yeah.
Twenty-foot cartway in between nine by eighteen spaces, or sixty, or whatever, whatever it is having.
Right, if you follow it that way, but it's not, since they don't need to have back and forth. Or maybe that is written as something under, unassociated as a requirement. But then they would also do employee parking. Choppers.
Okay, is there anything else at this time that, uh, we should discuss anymore?
Maybe it's not a business anymore without...
Quite some time ago, just couldn't get, clarifying some of the signs. Remember, we had discussed the, uh, since the digital signs are becoming...
I'd like to handle that separately if we're gonna go back into doing that or having to do...
While we had...
That's more of an in-depth, I think.
Yeah.
Can you just kinda, um, put it on some one hundred, which will quick enough?
Well, signs?
Yeah, I thought we already did done with that.
Well, we worked... we... we've worked on it numerous times over the years, but we never came up with a finalized draft. We looked at billboard sign, and then we... then it went... and then it went into Huntley and Energy, and so we kinda got sidetracked, so...
I have a whole binder of that stuff, so bring that back out.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I'd like to handle that maybe as a separate issue rather than these... These amendments, I wanna do like a more the quick and dirty, like the things that we just a little bit...
Yeah, real quick on the signs too. I do know that there is some stuff in its minor things in the ordinance with Elizabeth Township. I did see that, and plus there's some stuff in the binder, uh, with the zoning, so take a look at that. And if you still have your old stuff from that, look at it. I know I have a bunch of them at home, a stack of stuff, so...
So really, just so everyone can look and see if there's other names.
We'll look at what, all of section fourteen, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred, um, one thousand, am I correct on that?
Well, we're gonna... I'm gonna... we're gonna do something on... Yeah, we'll do something on fifteen oh three, eleven oh two, F, fourteen oh one point one A, and article, uh, we're gonna look at the parking under article sixteen. and articles, uh, we're gonna look at the parking under article sixteen, but you guys don't have to worry about that. I'll, I'll work with John, Veronica on those ones, you guys look at everything else and see if there's anything else that you wanna throw in.
The rest of the ordinance, the.
But if we have any questions, comments, or concerns, can we get to you?
Sure.
Okay. Um.
The more I'm looking at this, the better.
Better. Absolutely, so everyone, put your thinking caps on and come up with some suggestions. Okay, um, I guess we can go forward now, let's see, uh, want to, like, the solar panel, you wanna refer to? Solar panel?
Yes, um, I had talked about this, because we've had some applications coming for solar, and, uh, zoning really doesn't mention an accessory use for solar, um, so they kind of had to approve those under, um, similar uses in, I'm not getting all wording right, but similar to uses.
Similar uses, uh, accessory to a primary use to a house, I think.
But I think our, because we had discussed it before, and I know when Megan submitted, Megan McDonough submitted some of the requests there. I think we just need to, as so slowly becoming more popular, it's one thing, you know, what, let's look at, maybe adding, at least getting the.
Residential.
Yeah, residential accessory.
Well, why wouldn't we just use what we were given?
So.
From the, um.
You'll see, you'll see the stuff that I put in front of you today, I just got that today, yeah, Megan, Megan, yeah, Megan just submitted today.
But I meant, we have this guidebook from Penn Future, City Pittsburgh, we worked on it June, July, and August, we talked about this stuff. If we're gonna do something with solar, why don't we do a comprehensive ordinance, why don't we do it right, instead of one piece at a time?
Want to.
Um, other communities have adopted this pretty much as is.
You guys can still.
We could tweak it, but, uh, why wouldn't we do one little piece here, one little piece there? Why don't we do a solar ordinance and do it right?
Well, I'm, I have no problem, I'm just saying, you know, I'm getting, I mean, within a space of a week, I have two residential solar requests come in.
But what would you base saying, okay, you can do this? Um, side yards, roofs, we, you know, if the neighbors say it's okay.
Fortunately, the two that came in were for roof mountain systems, which are by common, by far the most common.
Yes.
But I know if we don't address at some point, somebody's gonna come in and say, I want a ground mountain system. Like for gazebo's and, you know, children's playhouses.
That's why, that's why we put it on the agenda, because we, John got two applications in, and we were, we're, you know, we were able to use them as accessory to the primary for now, okay? So, that, those ones were okay, but we, we talked about it, and obviously, this is a, this is a trend, and we need to get something, it's our opinion that we need to get something in place to address, address it, at least on the residential end, because that seems to be where we're at least getting the application. So, you're right, that's fine, if you wanna do a comprehensive thing, you guys can certainly do that. My concern would be, you know, that could take time, you know, my, my thought would be, at least get the residential in place, that way, whenever these applications come in, we at least have something, and you can always amend that, you can always add to it and, and do whatever you want from there. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and we're already working on fifteen oh three, so we put the setbacks there, simply add an amendment to, yeah, I mean.
But if next week you get a business, or you get a church, or you get a restaurant, or you get a gun club, or sheds, or barns, or doctor's offices, what are you gonna do then?
Well, we could, we could look at it also, it's not just residential with accessory use, which would, would cut commercial.
Not just residential.
Yeah, accessory use is, accessory is principal, you know, so it's not a solar farm, it would be only for the use of that parcel.
Right, I understand, but what I'm saying is, why do it for just residential, single homes? Uh, why not, if we've already done, if we already have a probably guide, why not do it right?
Adding just accessory and, you know.
You're saying if a business, like a laundry mat or something, looks, uh.
Well, I mean, that's what the guidebook was for, that we went over last summer, yes. I'm just saying.
Yeah, accessory, yeah, yeah, maybe you're, maybe I'm miss, maybe you're not understanding what I'm saying. I'm not saying, when I'm saying residential, I don't just mean resident, I'm just saying for sort of the, I shouldn't be saying accessory, okay? So, I think that the township needs to get something in place for the use of solar as an accessory use in the short term. In the long term, if you wanna talk about people doing commercial development with just putting, you know, one acre of solar panels on and then selling that, or whatever they do with it, I, I just think that's something that, that can be, we, we can look at, and we certainly should address it, but I'm saying, I think in the short term, because we're getting these applications in, I would like to see the township get something in place to at least.
Well, just that single family thing, 'cause I'm not saying, you know, a solar farm, I'm saying, but, let's say you're a business, you're, you have a building, you wanna put camp.
He's covering it by saying accessory.
Accessory, yeah.
Okay, and taking out the single family.
Right, it's physics.
It's accessory, I'm sorry, yeah.
What's this letter in reply, or the rep?
That, um, if you remember, Megan McDonough submitted a text amendment for zoning, and she just submitted that today, when she, uh, you know, uh, by email, and I just included it, you know, this is the proposal.
Yeah, the date on the original, that did some reply to this?
It's what she changed.
That's a letter, that's a letter from the comments from the county, and that's her latest draft.
Okay, where's the county letter?
That's just what I received in email today.
What is it, the county letter? I have it.
That's, we're gonna see it.
I mean, I remember she commented.
Yeah, this is all I received today, so I just gave you what I got.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to tell them what comment number one was.
My question to you is, since Megan had a, um, she put up an ordinance, do we know by that, or should we?
I, well, here's, here's the deal with Megan, so she was an applicant for a proposed ordinance amendment, okay? And I honestly, she just sent these out today, I haven't even looked at what changes she made to it. So if they are material alterations, we're gonna have to vote on her amendment, because she doesn't want any change, like, she did not wanna take any suggestions or break it up into accessory and commercial, she wants it how she wants it, and she's the applicant, she's allowed to do that. And so I'll look at whatever changes she made, it may come back here for a straight vote on.
Didn't we deny that?
We did, well, I think, yeah, it went back to the county for comment, and she has then made changes since the county comments.
So she re, reapplied?
So she replied, yeah, I haven't even had a chance to look at it yet, but I mean, we may have to address it before, it's ultimately gonna go to the commissioners, regardless of what you guys.
Okay, what did the commissioner say?
They have, they didn't see it, because she was gonna make changes to it, and she, I saw her enter a bunch of times, she's not working on it, so she finally made.
Sort of died here.
She finally made those changes, yeah, yeah.
For a, I mean, install.
Install, well, install, it didn't necessarily install here, it installed after the county made comments, because I said to her after the meeting, I said, do you want me to make the proposed changes for you, or it's your ordinance, you wanna make them, and she said, I'll make them, and then she, we haven't received any. We never received.
Stop this, let's go.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, I, I think you guys did act, she did actually enter like five different versions?
Correct.
And you guys opted to forward all of them to the commissioners to sort out, if you look at the history.
Yeah, she actually then picked one.
Okay.
And she said, this is the one that I, because I told her that, I said, I said, how do you want me to handle this? And she said, I want version, and I thought it was one maybe even, it was like, she was like, I want this version, this is the one I want voted on. And I said, I said, you want, you don't wanna take any comments from these guys, right? Like you, because they can propose changes, and then you can, and she was like, no, I want, this is the version that I want, I don't want any comments, I just wanna know what they wanna do. And I think these guys denied it, right? And then they went to county, and the county had comments, and then after the county comments came back, I said to her, like, do you want me to do, make these proposed changes, or you wanna work together on them, or do you just wanna do, and she said, I'll do them, and then that was in like September.
Yeah, then it happened.
And I read it a bunch of times up at school, and I'm like, are you doing this? And she was like, yeah, I've just been so busy, and then I think probably what happened is, you know, totally unrelated, we got these applications in for these solar things, so John and I were saying, hey, we gotta get something in place for solar, she probably saw or something told her, hey, there's solar on this, and she was probably like, oh, I better get that done. And then, so she submitted this actually today, and I just got this, so, yeah, I haven't even had a chance to.
Yeah, so, you know, even in the tactic when I sent it out to planning, I included a copy of just Western influence for, right, having time, not having anything else to, you know.
Yeah, because I would like to make changes, and I think we would like to.
Well, okay, so, yeah, so I think that's something we're gonna, if you guys are gonna develop a solar ordinance, on either whether accessory or whether it's comprehensive, that's fine, but you're all, we're probably gonna have to at least, we may have to decide Megan's just up or down, once again, I'm gonna look at the changes that she made, if they're material, we may at least have to make those, that, and then get that to the commissioners, let them deal with it, and then you guys can, can fight about.
What was the best, and what Sandy had, that was before I was on.
He doesn't have this, um.
I don't know the difference.
Yeah, but I, I have, I have a bunch of them, so, or John probably has copies of them, I'm sure he can get them to you.
Is that a choice, I do a choice between using that one or using this one?
We're doing ours.
You can, yeah, you can, I mean, I think what you might say is you can rewrite your own, but these are just guides.
It's just kind of like a, give you some kind of a baseline on what to do.
Okay.
Um, now, do you want us to try to come up with something tonight for the accessory, for the two applications?
No, no, I won't come up with something for you to start looking at, it's easier for me to put something, I think you can make changes.
Okay, what are you gonna do with the two applications you have now?
They're, they're, they're done, they're done.
That's, all right. Okay, so, put your thinking caps on for that too, of course, on what we can do on that as a procedure. Okay?
Okay.
Are we good? Uh, do we have anything else? Anybody else have any comments, comments, questions, on the board here? You, okay, I need a motion to adjourn. David?
Can I ask a question before you adjourn, please? The big question for that tank was, is it gonna serve both, all off in the car?
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's what I was trying to understand, but you knew that, you saw that somewhere.
Yes.
I saw that. Okay, again, let's, uh, Sean, David, with the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, have a good weekend, yeah.